You know, increases from NPPD, for example. Um, but that can also change at, at a moment too, and then the whole equation shifts. Uh, according to Greg, do you want anything?
No, and some of it is unfortunately, it's just hindsight. No one knew at the time when you guys were, because they kind of had everybody against the wall at the same time. That's not a critique of NPPD, that was just the circumstances. Everyone came up at the same time, and so some jumped off the boat, some stayed on the boat. But nobody knows if the boat sunk and everybody survived that jumped off, you don't know. And that, now you're just playing armchair quarterback on this one. And so critiquing that too terribly much at this point is probably better to start critiquing at year fifteen of that twenty year contract. And then keeping that in the back of the mind, or keeping that the forefront of the mind than maybe the people that succeed all of us here at the city. Is making sure that's passed down through, uh, I don't want to say generations, it's not that long from now. But, but, but through our institutional knowledge and passed on. Uh, because we have examples now, I mean, you have the South Sioux Cities and the Northeast Public Powers and the Beatresses of the world that did jump. And you can find out what they did and how much they saved or didn't save. Uh, most of them I would say saved, uh, but yeah, it's hindsight. But it's really looking at this and, and preparing you with these numbers and some deep dives. Do a deep dive to show you what, where we've been in regards to our power purchase from Bluestone. Do some of these things.
The procedural process, I agree with Greg that we do need to revamp this process. Cause you know, we've already adopted a budget that had these revenues built in to that budget. And so to do this after that fact, if this weren't to pass, you know, our budget numbers then would be off. We'd have to do some scrambling to make adjustments because it's, it's expecting revenue that would not be realized without these. And so that's why this kind of puts us into a little bit of an awkward position, which can be avoided in the future. Just by having this vote sooner, so that we know, um, going into the budget, what the revenues look like. And then we're not in a position where we have to, um, you know, figure out how to back out of, 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 of the, back out of the budget. Because we don't have the revenues that we thought we had.
But budgets can be amended, can't they?
I mean, it's a process, but it's the process, it shouldn't be necessary if we had this discussion first.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying it, they can be.
And technically you guys can change the rate in the middle of the year. I mean, you guys could, if, if NPPD came down in February and said six percent, you guys could go, alright, we're increasing it by two percent right now. To start our, get ourselves moving. You have that ability. Um, but yeah, it, it's best for our planning purposes and giving you accurate projections for your year to, to hold true to the budget. But it is to your control.
So like I said, this, this was the second reading and the council wishes to move on to the next item. We can do the second reading as well, if you want to take a vote on this. We was first need to have a vote on the suspension of a statutory requirement of three readings.
I move to suspend the statutory requirement of three readings.
Second. Too quick for me, you know, the second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, Mr. Ring for a discussion. This is just on the suspension of the statute. Seeing none, uh, please call a roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
No.
Camper?
No.
Singleton?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
And the motion failed.
Yeah. Okay, item number two is also an ordinance amending the municipal code, initiating a sewer rate adjustment, increasing total system revenues by three percent. Effective with the October twenty twenty billing. This will be the second reading as well. An ordinance to amend sections three twenty-five dash eight point one through three twenty-five dash eight point three of the municipal code. To initiate a sewer rate adjustment that will increase total system revenues generated by rates charged to customers for service from the sewer system of the city by three percent. Effective the October twenty twenty billing to provide for billing thereof. To repeal the original sections three twenty-five dash eight point one through three twenty-five dash eight point three. To provide three time when this ordinance shall take effect. It has been read, uh, the second of time, and now the council is welcome to discuss.
Move to suspend statutory rule.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ring for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
No.
Camper?
No.
Singleton?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion failed.
What's that? Field?
Field.
Sorry, can you? Um, next we have an ordinance, this is directing the conveyance of real property legally described as lot one. Lot B replata blocks two and three, Seward Real Campus P U B, original edition, final plat, any portion of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section nineteen dash T one one. N dash R three E, City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, to I H C Properties Incorporated. Correct?
Yeah, I gotta get you to break those things down for him with those Ts and Rs and Es me, it's alright though. Um, this is a sale of property within the real campus. Uh, this will be on the lot, if you think of the, the block, that's your first block in the southeast corner. This will be in the northwest corner directly south of where Lavander, uh, our next tenant will be. Uh, I H C Properties is looking to build essentially a spec building on this property, approximately six thousand square feet. Uh, that will use for industrial officing businesses. And so the ideas that you look at are people like HVAC contractors, plumbing contractors, uh, people that may need an overhead door access in. To use vehicles that they utilize for their business where they go out and take care of things. It could be somebody that does glass repair, whatever it may be. Um, they're going to build a spec building and also take an option on the lot directly to the south. Um, and so that's kind of what they're looking at doing. Uh, we think this will be a great addition to the rail campus. We've got a lot of interest, uh, by local businesses that are looking to expand or look for other locations. Um, to upscale their, uh, businesses, but there's nothing that's within their grasp where they can actually afford to both go out and acquire the location and build upon it. And so this request and this kind of thing has come in a lot to Jonathan, I know if he was here tonight, uh, he'd talk a lot about that. And, uh, and so we think this would be a, a good opportunity and that's what will be coming. And, uh, I can answer any other questions you have.
Would these spaces be leased or would the individuals buy part of it or?
I believe they'd be leased, correct Kelly?
Correct.
All right, in ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to I H C Properties LLC to provide for publication of this ordinance in vampiric form. To provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect, the ordinance has been read by title is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four. And the title is hereby approved and a motion to suspension to statutory rule.
So?
Second.
Motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, would you like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four be finally passed and adopted, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
This is the last ordinance for this evening, telling you when to file a motion to make the ordinances apart the current record.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and for discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I, I number four is resolution authorizing Mayor Ickmeyer to sign the annual certification, certification of compliance to the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, classification and standards, Greg.
Uh, standard protocol, we have to authorize Mayor to sign this resolution that we abide by all the requirements every year. Can I answer any questions you have?
If not, you just want to introduce the resolution. Okay. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-eight. Would you like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
Second.
The motion and a second, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, I number five, awards bids, award bids for City of Seward Electric and Water Advanced Metering Infrastructure, A M I metering systems, correct?
Yeah, you have two items here. Um, we bid out for A M I metering systems and bid individual water and electric and also combined products over a number of months process. We had presentations by, uh, almost all the bidders that did bid on the projects. We were able to communicate with other communities that utilized those systems and the recommendations that were considered by, uh, both Larry and Tim's crews. Uh, the billing department in City Hall, and then ultimately Olson assisted with us, which you'll see in the recommendation letter. And tried to establish A M I updated metering systems. The antithesis for what kind of pushed us off the cliff to look at new metering systems, as you may or may not be aware. We have the TWAC system right now, the TWAC system is an automated meter reading system that is kind of antiquated to some extent. Uh, it was a program that was the utilization of the originally, what I think is the Seward Rural Electric, which has now been absorbed by Norris. NPPD and the City of Seward entered into a joint or local agreement to pay for that system. It is actually housed with NPPD. Norris, when they took over Seward Rural, moved away from that system because they had already implemented their own A M I system slightly before they absorbed Seward Rural. And then NPPD went out and looked at putting in one unified system throughout all their wholesale and retail customers. And so they were moving away from TWACs, which would leave us solely by ourselves with that system. Uh, we've continued to have another year, how long have we had that system now Bonnie? You remember? Oh.
I don't know, how, when?
It has to be closing in on twenty years, maybe fifteen years. Uh, and so we would have been stuck holding that and then scrambling to come up with all of the technology and everything else that would go with it. Um, and so we had the discussions internally and we decided that we needed to look at at least initially a more up to date A M I system. The purpose for an A M I system is what you look at there is for the purposes of reading and the technology used to keep the data, the level of data you bring back in. Uh, looking at, being able to look at things in real time. We've moved away from a line read system with TWACs to basically a radio, uh, system that you would traditionally see where these would communicate up to a collector. Collector would then through the internet come down into City Hall and we would have active readings in a moment. And we could look things up and monitor things on all sorts of different levels and parameters. Um, and so we took a look at both of those. Ultimately, the recommendation was, as you see here, was to go away from a dual system, which we have right now. Basically what we have is the radios have been communicating with the electrical, uh, units on the homes. And then the electrical unit through the TWACs brings both sets of information back. We can't get the radios anymore, this is the other element that pushed this. We can't get the radios anymore that work with the TWAC system at all, they're not built. And so we had to do something on water no matter what. And once we determined we were going to go away from water by this bid, that's another thing that started pushing on the electric side. Ultimately, the systems we have here, the Eclera system, Eclera actually makes the TWAC system we have now. The system they've offered allows for integration, which allows for us to be able to read based on the TWAC system for what's still out there. In unison with the new R F system that will communicate itself up. And so we can seamlessly transition without interrupting our billing at all. And so that, uh, is the recommendation on the electric side. On the water side, the system we went to once the radios went out actually ended up being the Badger system. Currently, we are reading that system under a drive-by unit that, uh, goes around and it basically acts like the collector itself. We drive up and down the city and go to different points that we know will reach all the radios. Those come in, we take that information back, import it into City Hall. Once the meters are implemented in the Badger one, it works off a cellular system and they'll all communicate back through the internet on a cellular ring. That's how their collection system works and you just need a certain percentage of them rolled out there. Uh, and so again, this was all reviewed by Olson, Larry and the electric crew and the water, uh, wastewater department. Then also we had people involved, Rhonda specifically from the billing office. Uh, and these were the two that were recommended. We think these are the best possible systems for us to roll out seamlessly over time. And have the least amount of interruption in regards to any of the systems we operate currently. Can I answer any questions you have?
All right, question Greg.
That's it.
Does this, uh, involve new meters or any other hardware that need to be installed?
Yes. Yes.
For both water and electric?
Yep, and the hard part on the, the water ones is due to that tethered nature of the current ones. If we replace an electric one, we have to replace the water one. We can replace the water one and leave the current electric ones and they'll still function. And so both sys, both departments are aware of that, but still made this recommendation. We thought we would have it no matter what, just because of the nature of the current TWAC system. So even if we rolled out a dual system, it wasn't, it was still going to have that issue, so. But yes, there'll be new hardware. Obviously, the easier one for us is replacing meters on electric water. If you're well aware where your electric, or your water meter or the radio is, that's down in your basement usually. And so that will take a little bit more TLC in how we roll that out. Uh, but we'll design that rollout and then probably work within sectors of the city as we do that over the coming years. So, a lot of this is also based on availability of meters as they come in. We're not going to have just a whole stockpile of them sitting somewhere, uh, because we won't be able to get them all in that amount of time. There's quite a bit of lead time on these things already.
Thank you. You got a question or comments?
Greg, what's the timeline for total completion of the project?
Our hope is between two and three years. So just to be able to, it's a significant cost and we did bid it as part of, if you look through the bid documents, we did bid it with install as well. But it was not cost effective to have anybody else come in. There are professional groups, they know what they're doing, but there is also something to say about taking that downtime in the winter when we're not out doing capital projects. And utilizing our crews to be able to get onsite verification of the socket or anything else we're doing in regards to some of those electric meters. Getting down in, not that we're snooping around people's houses, but get down in and make sure, you know, we don't have meter pit issues in some of the older homes. That we need to make some adjustments to, recommendations on, to readjust those to get better connections and other things on the internal water ones. There's something better about having us look at it locally than having some contractor come into your house banging around and get out, so. Uh, which we also didn't think would be cost efficient, so we did make a recommendation on any of those alternates to the bid.
Five A is an award bid to Eclera for electric A M I metering system in the amount of eight hundred and three thousand five hundred and five dollars and twenty-four cents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, is made for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, can I just second? Thank you. Um, Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I have B, award bid to Metering and Technology Solutions, Badger for Water, A M I metering system in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Is there a motion?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I have six, agreement with A M G L C P A to conduct the city's annual audit, correct?
Uh, this is just a standard audit agreement that we do every year with A M G L C P A. Uh, there are current auditors, under the original proposal, this would be year four of a potential five-year agreement. It would need to be bid out, uh, or looked at some sort of request for R F P or R F Q. After this year or other, but, uh, we have up to a five-year agreed upon price for that. This is just the standard agreement you have to enter into so that they, we understand we're being audited by them.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Any questions, I'll go first.
Second.
The motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I have seven, change order number two for the Waverly Road Improvement Project. Mike, did you want to take that?
Sure. Um, so this, um, uh, Greg can just.
Yep, this one is in relation to just a, uh, small change order.
I'm sorry, I remember, I recall at this time.
This one is the, uh, the low spot in the corner of the cemetery, the undeveloped cemetery lot.
So this is east of Ford Street.
Yep.
And so this is with the, uh, the new storm sewer that's on the south side of Waverly Road, being able to tie in. There's a low spot in that north, uh, northwest corner of the rental addition of the, the addition to the cemetery. And this would, this work would alleviate that, uh, the low spot conveniently into the storm sewer that then, uh, heads, uh, east on Waverly.
This was originally discussed onsite and designed or assisted in the design by Jake as well, correct?
Correct.
This is kind of an old item.
Right, it's bounced around, uh, quite a bit.
Yep.
Got identified after the design process was, uh, was completed. So as many construction projects, then things come up, seems, uh, opportune time to take care of it now.
Again, it's a three thousand three hundred and fifty dollar increase on a three point six million dollar project. Not saying it's pennies or anything, but noting that for.
Any questions from the council or comments?
I'll defer to general.
The motion and a second is made for a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Greg, is council request different from future requests?
No.
Okay, so then, although the first reports we have here, the same measure of report, correct?
Uh, I can answer any questions about city administrator's report. Uh, we continue to work on the chief hiring process. We have delegated that down to what we believe to be, uh, four candidates. And so we'll move into the next phase after we finish the really, really in-depth background check. So that's the part, we're in right now and then we'll move on to the next phase of that. Uh, Mayor, myself and some other individuals. Uh, that's probably our biggest one. Other than that, I would note just stress and concern, uh, as you may see in the numbers and the updates I've been sending you. I was on the Unified Command team call today with Four Corners Health, uh, hospitals. Uh, and we're just generally starting to see some big upticks. Not to the point where it's, you know, end of the world kind of stuff, but the trend is up. And, uh, we saw the increase this week in the dial moving into orange. Uh, those numbers continue to stress in that direction. Uh, if you saw some comments by U N M C in regards to hospitalization numbers, we're seeing those hospitalizations increase as well, uh, within the Four Corners District. And so, uh, we're starting to see some creep into some schools where we're getting pockets of, uh, not specifically in Seward County at the moment. But it was noted in, in two of the other counties that they're seeing some large upticks in schools now. And so we need to continue to stress that. It has a big effect on the city because again, we do operate the rec programs, things like that. We've tackled football, flag football, soccer across all levels, volleyball. We sent out registration today for wrestling. And so as those dials adjust, especially since we utilize a lot of facilities with the schools, uh, that can play into our ability to offer some of that programming and to do other things. And also, we obviously need to take considerations in regards to operations of, of the city. Uh, because the utilities still got to stay on, police still got to go out and do the work that they need to do, volunteer fire. If we start seeing high exposure rates and we got these guys going out there, we need to ratchet back towards different things and we got to keep track of that. So I just bring that to your attention, it, it's not an alarming thing for concern, but just noting the trends in the discussion we had on Unified Command today. Uh, that's the direction we're seeing until we see something else, so.
What is the council, do we, what kind of power do we have to do anything or what? What can we do?
It's unfortunate with not having all of the systems set up ahead of time before the pandemic started. Uh, across the Four Corners region, we really don't have a lot of ability and even Four Corners doesn't in regards to unifying and undertaking their own authority. I mean, I know me and Kelly have gone back and forth on looking at some of these. Uh, I think you're going to see some test floats of other communities, uh, in the state that are smaller communities, not Lincoln and Omaha. Who are starting to see things that are going to start doing stuff and they'll be the guinea pigs for, uh, some of these other things. What?
For the legal challenges, right?
Yeah.
We don't have any legal authority to do our own thing.
It's.
It's, isn't it health district authority?
It's, we don't have the agreements of the health district in the first place. And so there are police, we'll call them police powers, and Kelly can correct me. There are elements within the police powers given to you by the state to utilize some of this, but it is uncharted territory. If Kelly or I or any of the other, the league had very definitive case law in Nebraska to hang our hat on. Because stuff like this had been challenged before, it's because we haven't had a pandemic in a hundred years. All these laws that were set up to handle this have never been fully broached and breached. And so we can't give you a perfect scenario. And so we're going to probably have to watch, take the recommendations of the league, because they're going to be advising all these communities, uh, outside of Lincoln and Omaha and Lincoln and Omaha. Uh, and then, um, you know.
I mean, this is true even at the state level, I mean, there is some question, the governor's ability to do some of the things that have been done in the past. And Omaha, Lincoln are home rule charter cities, which is different than what we are. And, and even when Omaha went to do their initial mask mandate, the Attorney General's Office threatened, uh, you know, to sue to stop that. So no one really has a definitive answer on what, what would actually happen if, if, you know, if this plays its way out to the Supreme Court. It also gets really expensive and as much as I want to put Kelly's kids through, you know, Harvard Law someday, you know. We would rather, and, and not leave you out, you're the new guy, you too. Your kids are going to do a nice course, you too. But unfortunately, you know, you know, we need to have a pretty dire situation where, you know, like we did previously. But we're also following Manchester County and the governor and, you know, others that, that kind of paved the way. And so, you know, as a city, our authority is, is a little, um, uncertain when it comes to what we can and can't do without.
We can encourage.
Yeah, and that's, and, and that's something, you know, we, we can obviously do that, and I think a lot of it too is just, people would need to be just smart about their own activities. I mean, our biggest spike we had was a, was a party bus of twenty-one year olds. I mean, there's just certain things that you should probably avoid. And if you're in, and if you're in an age or a, uh, previous, you know, health issues, um, you should probably be careful as well, you know. You know, when, when you're, you know, out and about, if you are out and about. And so, you know, a lot of this personal responsibility, um, you know, and, and you're starting to see this around the country too, like with college football. You know, you have some stadiums that have thousands of people and some stadiums are, are empty and they're all just, and no one really has the answer, they're all trying to, to figure it out. So I guess the short answer is, we don't have anything definitive that we can offer, uh, unless, you know, unless it was a mask mandate, for example. But, um, you know, the other issue too is compliance. And I think we're at a point in the state where there's a lot of fatigue when it comes to people wanting to follow these things. And you saw happen in Lincoln with Madison when they decided they, they didn't want to follow it. And, and with, you know, the kinds of issues that that, you know, had, so it, it really, it, it, one thing, you know, trying to do what's the public's best interest, but sometimes the public disagrees.
The, the reason I bring it up again is we operate a few specific things within the city. And I, I kind of look towards recreational programming. If we go and have our last home tackle football game this weekend against Norris, and we're still in the orange, or the recommendation comes from the N S A A for the utilization of any of these facilities. That you need to either wear a mask or have six inch social distancing and spread out and not just clump together in the stands. We have to work to get that implemented and, and you need to understand, I don't need some angry parent yelling at me because I told him to bring a lawn chair. And sit by the fence, you know, a quarter of the way around the field because that's. because that's our ability to utilize this facility, which is operated by the school district, which is under specific rules under NSA. And we just have to be very careful on those things. And again, looking down the pipeline, the city running a rec wrestling program. I don't, I've been talking to Bob Core and the other wrestling coaches all season long. How do we do wrestling, you know, and I think they're asking themselves the same question. And so it's, it's important and I, I don't want anyone to think that the city takes it lightly. We take it very seriously and we continue to work with, uh, Four Corners and look at the guidance from NSA and everybody else and work with the school district. So, because we have, we have to work together. We got to utilize their facilities if we want to put on basketball, if we want to put on wrestling, uh, some track clubs, things like that. We have to work together and if we can't, uh, use their facilities safely into the way that they do, then, then maybe we shouldn't be using them. So.
Any other questions or comments, Greg? Are you going to do the motion to accept it for?
So, second.
The motion and a second, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Any future requests for council items or ministry of action?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I started talking with Greg back in February about, uh, us working with the Carroll K Homeowners Association in putting up some low light mitigating lights and some sort of plantings along the west side of Carroll K to mitigate the, the issues of having that road there. Then COVID, we started the conversation, COVID happened and so it kind of got dropped. Well, now things are starting to move out there. So, uh, I've also had some follow-up conversation with Greg. I'd like us as a council to discuss with Greg's input, the city's input, um, what our options are, whether it's a memo of understanding with HOA, what, what are we willing or can we do to help do some buffer, natural buffer zone planning along Carroll K and some street lights that don't look like a landing strip for the homeowners? So.
And I just know, I just noticed the E-Stridge HOA, not the Carroll K HOA.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think it'd be said if we called it that.
E-Stridge HOA, yeah.
Thank you, Greg.
Any other future requests?
We know what that is.
Any other future requests, announcement of upcoming events? I got an email, a, a book.
I was checking if you were doing it or if I was.
I'll just do it quick.
Okay.
What, this is Jonathan's voice, all right? I don't have time to change this to second person. Yeah, it happens, I read it. Want to make the council aware, we're honored to host the Nebraska Chamber of Commerce Executives Fall Conference in Seward October 7th through the 9th, which will welcome chamber of commerce professionals from across the state. We've been approved for hosting this event by filling out a COVID-19 event and gathering safety plan. We'll be asking participants to wear masks, practice social physical distancing. We'll engage hand washing and encourage hand washing while providing hand sanitizer for use. We have many participating businesses with meals, drinks and retail shops for the various activities. Thanks to Adam Bodie for accommodating our fan show request. Also, we appreciate the mayor and Greg for providing verbal welcomes to our guests on Wednesday and Thursday. Thanks again to Seward City Councilmember John Singleton for his encouragement to host our annual cleanup day. We're happy to announce that we'll be hosting it on Saturday, October 10th at the City Horseshoe. We appreciate the city staff's support of this event partnership at the City Horseshoe on South Columbia. We will be accepting scrap metal and appliances from 8:00 AM to noon this upcoming Saturday. Unfortunately, we can't accept electronics or hazardous waste. We hope to do this in future years. Also, on Saturday, October 10th, nationally, there's a kickoff to the holiday shopping season taking place across the country. We encourage, as always, for everyone to consider shopping local and supporting our retailers that keep our economy stable and growing. Our local businesses need our support this year more than ever. Uh, and also on site, we will have the mayor's fun run will be November 1st Sunday and it'll be a costume themed fun run. So wear your superhero costumes if you like.
That what you're going to wear?
Have to be there, I guess.
For safety purposes, make sure though that they don't have anything that drags or could cause you harm as you run with them on. That's all we, we always have to remind them of.
Yes, it's our liability.
My Batman cape might get caught in the shoe.
All right, so those are the announcement of upcoming events unless you want to give anything else?
I do not.
Okay. Next we have strategy sessions, strategy sessions, so the attorney to provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interest at the commercial rail campus development area.
I'm Mr. City Councilgoer, the mayor, city administrator, I guess Jonathan's not here, um, city attorney and co. For the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail development, carry real estate interest and provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for, for not exceed.
30 minutes.
30?
Yeah, it won't take anywhere near that long.
New motion?
Second.
New motion and a second, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
The council's board is going in close session for the texture of public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area, real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are in closed session.